A call to order this work session for the City of Salem City Council from Monday, May 20, 2024. If the recorder will please call the roll.
Counselor Stapleton?
I'm here.
Counselor Nishioke?
Here.
Counselor Phillips?
Here.
Counselor Gwynn?
Absent.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Here.
Counselor Hoy?
Here.
Counselor Nordike?
Here.
Counselor Varney?
Here.
Mayor Hoy?
Here. All right, will you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance did a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Counselor Stapleton, do we have a motion to approve the special meeting agenda?
Yes, I move approval of the special meeting agenda.
Second.
Motion by Stapleton, second by Phillips. Any discussion? Will the reporter please call the roll?
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Nishioke?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Gwynn? Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Varney?
Aye.
Mayor Hoy?
Aye, motion passes. Counselor Stapleton, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Not tonight.
All right. So that takes us on to our discussion item, which is the Salem Governance Assessment, and I'm going to turn it over to City Attorney Dan Atchison to kick us off.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're providing an update on the Governance Assessment project, which is a priority from the City Council's 2024 Policy Agenda. The assessment is looking at three principal areas: Boards and Commissions, Neighborhood Associations, and the City Charter. Staff at Moss Adams have provided, have received feedback from City Council, City Staff, Board and Commission members, and Neighborhood Association Board members. The review includes a look at the city's Board and Commission organization and governance structure to provide recommendations and options to ensure the Boards and Commissions align better with best practices and ensure that they are fulfilling their purpose consistent with city policies. The review also includes a review of Neighborhood Association program to help associations better represent their neighborhoods and align the Neighborhood Association program of city policies, and a review of the City Charter, which was last amended in 1996, to determine if changes or updates to the Charter are desired, which would be placed on the ballot for voters to decide. Annie Rose Favreau and Maria Strauth from Moss Adams are with us tonight and will present their initial findings and recommendations.
All right, Annie Rose, if you hit that green, that button so the green light comes on. Thank you.
Great. All right. Did I share my screen correctly?
I think so. If you could pull that microphone just a little bit closer to you, that would be great.
Yeah, is that better?
Perfect. Much, thank you.
Great. All right. Well, thank you so much for having myself and my colleague Maria with you here this evening. We are looking forward to sharing an update on this Governance Assessment work. And we are in the midst of this work, so we have not yet finalized this report. We expect that in the next few weeks here, but we did want to come and share an update, share sort of where we're at right now, give you some high-level themes, see what initial questions and conversation is coming up here before we do finalize that report and bring that to you all as well. So this evening, what I'm going to do is go through and just reiterate what the project's scope is, then talk about some of the themes that we found, and then go into some of our priority recommendations. And what I'll do there is share some of the highest-level pieces in each of these kind of five areas that we have observations, and we can stop at the end of each one and see if there are questions, or we can kind of roll through all of them and then have questions and discussion at the end. Is there any strong preference from the group on which way you would like me to tackle that?
No, I think we'll just play by ear.
Great, all right. Well, then, starting out, just to reiterate in terms of the project's scope, as Dan had mentioned, there were three primary areas that we were looking. The first is the City's Charter. So we were doing a comparison of the City's Charter against best practice, some sample charters that are put forward as this is in general things that you should have in your charter. So we did a comparison there, and we'll be sharing some feedback on that later. But we also were looking at it just to say, is this up to date? Is this meeting your needs? Are there areas that are coming up that we feel like are need another review at the council level, essentially? So we were addressing really both sides of that there. We were also looking at the, we're going to call them governance groups, but really, that's a very broad term to include your boards, your committees, your commissions, task force, all of these types of groups that the city is using to help support decision-making here as well. So we call those, we lump them into the term governance groups, that's how I'm going to refer to them today. So we were looking at governance groups as well as neighborhood association practices, structures, policies, to see, is there any way that we can make these groups more efficient, more effective for the city? Are they serving the purposes that we need? Is there anything that needs to be clarified there as well? And then finally, we were also thinking about community representation. How is that showing up in these groups or not showing up in these groups? Is there anything the city can be doing to make sure that these groups are representative of our communities? So with that, a couple different pieces. Before I get into the actual results themselves, I did want to note for this, we did interviews with key members of city staff that support various groups, as well as city council members. We also did three surveys to get input from different groups, and so one was for the governance groups' members themselves, so we could get input there. We also asked for input from staff liaisons, so each governance group has an assigned staff liaison, so we wanted to get their feedback. And then finally, also feedback from Neighborhood Association leads as well. We did a large document review to understand what's already documented, what's already in place here, as well as pretty significant best practice research. And as I said, we did that comparison of the City Charter against best practices included, including the National Civic League's model Charter. So you'll see in the final report, we have quite a large set of appendices, and one of them is a comparison that says, here's the best practice, here's what's in your charter, you are either fully or partially aligned or not aligned, and what the recommendation would be there as well. So we go into quite a bit of detail on that front. And happy to walk you through that detail tonight, but I will start with at least the highest level as we go. So in terms of general themes, we did find that there are opportunities to improve the City Charter, really to get it updated, to make sure it's aligned with best practice. It is generally very well-aligned, I will say that. We found a really good deal of overlap and alignment with what we would expect to see. So the pieces that we call out, many of them are things just to make sure that it's updated and relevant for you today, and then also it raises some really interesting policy questions for you all as a city council to also think about moving forward. So we have raised some of those elements as well as open questions for consideration. Governance groups' operations, a lot of these groups are working really well. We actually had really positive survey feedback around these groups, which is fantastic. But there certainly are opportunities to improve efficiency and effectiveness, and I think that the biggest theme that you'll see there is just making sure that there's consistency, because right now, there's quite a variety in terms of what the experience might be from group to group. So we want to make sure that there's at least baseline consistency in terms of what that experience looks like, to make sure that it can be pretty effective and efficient. The other piece that we looked at, recruiting and onboarding, this is an area that could be strengthened to ensure community representation and engagement. There are quite a few pieces in that area. And then finally, the Neighborhood Associations and the relationship there. A really big piece that came up in almost all of our interviews was that there's ambiguity in that relationship right now, where Neighborhood Associations are their own separate entities, and yet they are tied to the city through this formal recognition, and we provide support to the Neighborhood Association. So really, what should that relationship look like? So that was a pretty common theme in terms of feedback and an area that we focused on in our recommendations. So I'm going to go through each of the areas, and like I said, we can stop, get into further detail on any of these, or I can just roll through and we can come back. But the first area I wanted to focus on was the City Charter. As I mentioned, we did a full comparison here. We also did some peer benchmarking here as well on some of these topics, looking at other similarly-sized cities in Oregon. So a couple different areas that I want to highlight in terms of where our recommendations are going. The first and foremost is compensation for mayor and city council members. Currently, that is not in place. It's fairly uncommon for that not to be in place. It is a fairly common structure, given the amount of time and energy that these positions require to have compensation to at least some degree in that area. So we share more details on that in terms of what we're seeing in other cities in Oregon, how sometimes that is structured. And I think the other reason that this comes up is because it also raises some interesting equity questions around saying, if this is a volunteer position, that is necessitating that the only people who can serve in these roles are people who can fully volunteer for these roles as well. So I think that there's some interesting information that we will be sharing there around what this looks like in other areas, but we would say it's fairly common to see compensation here. And right now, as your charter is set up, that is disallowed within the charter. We also looked at things like the mayoral term. A four-year term is fairly common. We looked at gendered language within the City Charter and potential updates there. And then we have this, consider other revisions to improve clarity, transparency, and accountability. And there are many, many topics under this category that we can get into further, but some of them include things like, how do you deal with vacancies? Can we clarify what that language looks like? Can we clarify what that process is? City Council prohibitions, how do we want to deal with that? What, what things are actually prohibited from, that council members cannot do and stay in this role, for example. We also have some items that are really around just clarity of language, things around elections, ethics, ordinances, some of those other pieces. So again, we can get into that in further detail, but quite a few of the recommendations there are really about, how can we make sure that it is as clear as possible, and that we're not missing any pieces? I think one of the really important conversations that will come up when you have these recommendations is likely going to be around, to what degree and to what detail do we want to actually put information into the charter? Because it's really, as you know, very difficult to change a charter. And so a lot of times, what we see is a preference towards putting less in the charter, and then either clarifying it further in other areas, maybe putting something into code or putting something into policy. So I think that will be a good conversation for you all to have in terms of saying, while we have identified some current gaps or lack of clarity here, you may also choose to clarify that in a space that is not the charter itself moving forward. So I anticipate that that will be a conversation. And then I think the other piece that you'll note, at least when you get to the report itself, is we were coming at this from primary, primarily from the lens of saying, what is best practice and how well are you aligned? But in our interviews, we also heard quite a few different ideas that came up that said, hey, I would love to look at this topic and this area, because even though it might not be an issue in terms of best practice, it's coming up for the City of Salem in X, Y, and Z ways. So an example of that is municipal court. How do we address that? How do we handle the structure of that within the charter? Obviously, that's a much, much broader policy conversation and discussion, but we have highlighted in the report all of those topics that did come up for conversation, so that you can at least have them all on the table as well. And then the last piece that I'll add here is, we also looked at some areas that are out of alignment with other, for example, state law that would want to be updated if you were going through a full update process. So that is the City Charter. Do we want to pause for questions here or keep moving?
Let's pause. Other questions? Counselor Stapleton?
I just had a question, and I don't know if this is for, well, I don't know who it's for. So when we're talking about updating the charter, there's lots of different pieces in this, it looks like, but I understand that it needs to go to the voters in order to be updated. So say even, I guess, how would that look? You know, I mean, sorry if I'm struggling. There's big things, like whether the mayor, mayor's term should be four years, or whether the mayor and councilors should be paid. Those seem very like clear-cut and straightforward, but when we start getting into some of the other things that are, you know, updating gendered language and all of the other kind of nuanced things within the charter, does that all go before the voters as well? And I guess, how do we, how do we, how do we put that forward to them in a way that's like, that we can take it in, or that, you know, the average voter can take it in and understand it?
Sure. So if I understand the question, we would be probably looking at a range of amendments to the charter, some cleanup provisions, as well as more substantive provisions. And I believe there's generally a prohibition, there's a requirement that, that ballot measures encompass a single subject, and you can't, you can't address multiple subjects in a single ballot measure. However, I don't believe that applies to a referred measure, something that the, the city would refer to, refer to voters regarding the charter. So you, we'd have to be very thoughtful in how we would put that together. There may be items that you want to take as a one-off versus you could do one referral with cleanup provisions or less controversial measures, and then take the other subject separately. There may be a desire to do otherwise, though, to have everything in one package, and it's a yes or no in the whole thing.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Nishioke?
Thank you. To add on to that, then, Mr. Atchison, are, would, would you take, if they were individual things, would you have to extend them through different elections, or could they all be on, like, one ballot?
All, you could have multiple questions referred to the voters on a single ballot. You don't have to, but you could.
Any other questions? Just checking online, not seeing any. Okay, I think we're ready to move on.
All right. So the next area that we looked at was governance group operations. And as I said before, I think the primary theme that we saw here is that there's a wide variety in terms of how operations are happening right now. And we obviously expect that. Different groups have different purposes. We would expect to see some degree of variation, but I think that there's value in creating kind of baseline consistency. So for example, we would recommend all groups have some type of bylaw or charter or some document that says, this is what we're about, this is our purpose, this is our role and the scope of our authority, for example. We would also recommend putting in place things like annual work plans or an annual report to council on a regular basis, so that you all know this is when we're going to be hearing from this group, and it's, it's another way, just a checkpoint, to make sure that what is happening informally in many ways can happen in a slightly more formalized structure, to make sure that these groups are, for example, aligned with city priorities and that type of thing. We also noticed that you have, you are using a counselor liaison role in a fairly limited way right now. There isn't a singular best practice for how to use council liaison positions. Some of the cities we work with have, do not use that method at all. Some have it where you, every single group has a liaison role, and some have it where there is a mix. So any of those methods can absolutely work and be effective, but what we would recommend is that you put together a framework that says, here's the circumstances under which it makes sense to have a council liaison role, if we're not going to do it for every single group, for example. And another piece of that is also clarifying and identifying, what do we really want this role to do? What, what is the function of this? And again, I think that a lot of this is already happening, it's out there, and it's just about documenting and clarifying some of these pieces. But if you intend to use that type of position moving forward, this is the type of infrastructure that might help it be more successful for you all. Another area that we looked at was just having a regular established process to review governance groups. You have quite a few of these groups. These are fantastic ways to get residents involved in the city, which is great, and, and there's so much, you know, knowledge and specialty expertise out in your community, that this is a fantastic way to bring that in. And it takes a huge amount of effort to have any of these groups running. So you want to make sure that we're using them in really, really effective ways, and that they're supporting the city in the most critical areas as well. So we would typically recommend having a regular review process, where you'd go through, look at all the governance groups, and say, okay, are these still working for us? Could any of these be combined? Could any of these be sunset? Or do we need to change anything about the process in terms of how we're using this group to make it more effective for us? So we have some recommendations there around that process itself, but we also have some recommendations around some potential groups that could be brought together and consolidated, as well as some groups to potentially sunset, and one group to look at the actual process that is feeding information into that group as well. So there's going to be more detail on that. And then the final area that we looked at was just, how can we make sure that we're promoting equity within these groups? Making sure that folks, for example, have regular trainings on this topic, a good understanding, and in particular, staff liaisons also have an understanding of how this should be showing up in the work, both in terms of how we're bringing people in and welcoming folks into these groups, but also just making sure that the processes are really accessible for folks as well. So any questions on governance group operations before I talk about some of the recruiting and onboarding pieces for governance groups?
I'm not seeing any.
Great, all right. So we also looked at, how are folks coming into these groups? Because one of the issues that we found is that it's really difficult to actually recruit folks into this. It's a lot of work to serve on these groups, and there's sometimes limited community knowledge of even what these groups are, what the role is that they play. So we looked at that in particular, and we do have some recommendations in here around just really thinking about, how can we make the recruitment process work for the city as best it can? And one of the options would be to shift to an annual recruitment cycle, where you would do a major annual push to say, here's all of our open positions, can we fill them? And kind of have this be a much broader citywide activity, rather than kind of group by group, as it has been done to a certain degree. And obviously, it will come up, when positions open, you'd still have to do, you know, ongoing recruitments throughout the year, but potentially shifting to an annual cycle could be one way of trying to increase that engagement. We will also, one of the appendices has all of the eligibility requirements for each one of the groups. And that was interesting to look at, because as every group is formed, it's, it's not uncommon to have a variety of eligibility requirements, because every time you form it, you think, okay, what do we want for this group? And here you go. But ideally, you would have kind of a set baseline of, here's the standard eligibility. So there's, there's a little bit of kind of admin cleanup work that might happen on that front. I think more-
Can I interrupt you for one second?
Yeah, absolutely.
Can I just give you a little bit more feedback?
Yeah.
That's the, you know, having been on that, the Boards and Commissions Appointment Group for a number of years, that's the number one challenge that that group faces. All of those sort of pigeonholes that we have to try to find applicants to fit, and my recommendation is get, get rid of as many of those as you can, because I think it's a barrier to actually getting applicants to serve on those committees. You know, there's some of them, it's so detailed and specific on who can serve and who can't serve, and how many of this and how many of that, and yeah, it's, it's a challenge.
Yeah, and I think that is such a fantastic point, because one of the things that we see is, if you have a lot in your eligibility requirements, it can create that barrier that you're talking about. It just makes it more complicated for people to come into these groups. But one of the things that we've seen some places do is shift to say, anything that we're including in eligibility, maybe we have baseline eligibility, where, I know you need to be a resident, some, some of those items might go into that. But then everything else then could potentially shift into the actual application process itself. So one of the things that we noted about your application, your baseline application for most of these groups, is that there's not a spot to ask about relevant background, lived experience, some of the other factors that might mean that someone has a lot of expertise to offer on a particular topic. And so this would be an opportunity to potentially shift some of the things that we've seen in the eligibility requirements into application context, where you're asking for this information as contextual information for the application, so that when you actually come to the appointment process, you can be basically creating a group that has more diversity, because you're asking for more information that would help, as you're trying to put these groups together, help the group that is making those decisions have more information at their fingertips for those discussions and decisions. So that's one piece that we certainly looked at. And I think that that can be a very helpful way to make sure that the application process is still quite low barrier, while also giving you the information to make sure that you can create groups that are fairly representative of your community. And then the last piece that we looked like, looked at was just onboarding and training for folks who are coming into these groups. This is an area where, again, consistency would probably be a good idea to, each group will have certain things that are specific to them, but in general, how do we come together as a group, what are decision-making processes, those types of things. And especially if you shifted to an annual recruitment cycle, you could also shift to an annual training cycle, which might be beneficial as well. So any thoughts on that one?
Counselor Stapleton?
Thank you. Yes, we were talking about how much we really enjoyed the in-depth questions that were asked of the folks who were applying for the Revenue Task Force, and how it really got into more of the demographics of the folks, and then also more of their lived experience. And you touched on that a little bit, but will this new process, or these new ideas that you have, will it align much more with what we experienced with Revenue Task Force?
Yes, I think that would be the intention. And I think right now, you have that set up, I think, for the Revenue Task Force, and maybe for one other group that we looked at, but basically, the recommendation would be to shift it much more along those lines, where you'd have your standard application, and then you might have some other areas that you're asking those background questions on, and those would, you'd want to tailor those to the group. So for example, for the Revenue Task Force, we asked very specifically about topics that were relevant to different types of revenue options that might come up in that discussion. So you want to be really thoughtful that we're asking the information so that it directly connects to the purpose of the group. But I think if you set it up in that way, it would just give you a lot more contextual information and a lot more, just another tool to, again, make sure that these groups are actually representative. So I remember a really big part of that conversation was even just asking people's age, so that we could get age diversity within the group. And if you don't have that in your process, if you don't ask that question, you can't even think about building a group that has age diversity within it.
Thank you.
Counselor Nordike?
Thank you. Yeah, I remember talking about the importance of having more background and lived experience in these applications months ago, and I just want to underscore how incredibly important that is. Counselor Stapleton and, and others serve on the Boards and Appointments Committee, and there are so many times when you're looking at names on a spreadsheet, and you have very little information with which to make decisions about who gets appointed to which body. The more information that I have, the better informed I am in making these recommendations. And I also feel that candidates who have backgrounds with lived experience, this is an opportunity for them to tell their story, for them to share why they should be chosen out of what are oftentimes competitive processes. Yes, we do have some commissions where we struggle to fill them, but there are plenty of other commissions, like Planning Commission, Budget Committee, and so on, where we regularly have way more people interested than slots available. So I just want to underscore how incredibly important it is to have a more robust application process, just so we can get a better sense of the people who are interested in serving. You know, I always see plenty of retirees who want to serve, people who have the financial means to serve. So if we are going to move forward with more information, I'm always interested in learning more about folks who don't fit the status quo mold for volunteers, folks who have English not as their first language or primary language spoken home, folks who've experienced homelessness, folks who are opening their own business. We need our entrepreneurs to have a say in things as well. There are just a wide variety of folks who call Salem home, and we're lucky to have such a diversity of folks who call Salem home. So if I know more about them, then I can make a more informed decision. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I just wanted to, something you said about asking their age. Any potential for ages discrimination? I mean, I know that, you know, a lot of things are going away from asking about age, but, and I see the purpose here. I just wonder, is that, could that open up problems later? That someone might feel that they're being discriminated against because of their age, whether young or old? You know, so I just, I wasn't sure how much we can ask and how much we should. That's all. Thank you.
A lot of the demographic questions can potentially be problematic. Typically, when we ask people to apply for things, that sort of information is optional. You know, for some boards and commissions where we're looking for specific demographics, we can require that as part of the qualifications for the office. But, you know, generally speaking, there's other ways to get at that information without asking, you know, specific demographic questions that require them to disclose things they'd like to keep private.
I think too, that also speaks to, you want to be really careful to make sure that there's a well-reasoned, well, good reasoning behind why you would want that information for that particular group as well.
Any other questions? I don't see any.
Great. All right, so second to last area, we also looked at staff support. As I mentioned, every group has a staff liaison. This is quite a lot of staff time that is used to support these groups. So we wanted to look through that lens and see if there's areas to make this more efficient, more effective for the investment that the city is making in this space as well. So one of the things that we noted is, again, the staff liaison role. Right now, that can look really, really different across different groups. And while to some degree, that's certainly appropriate, different groups require different types of support. It is helpful, especially for new staff liaisons coming in, to have a baseline saying, this is what you are meant to be doing in this role. This is what your responsibilities are. So just documenting those responsibilities is one of our recommendations here. Related to that, providing regular training. A lot of the training right now is provided in ad hoc manner or from the previous person in the role, which is great in terms of, most of the surveyed staff liaisons said, you know, I have the information I need. But as we're thinking about how do we make this more sustainable moving forward, having a regular training could be part of that as well. We also identified a few staff liaisons that, due to the nature of their full-time role, just have incredibly high workloads. So there are certain areas that we've also noted that could benefit from some additional staff support of not just having that one singular role doing that work too. The last couple of ones on this list are really related to the fact that storing documentation related to these groups, like meeting minutes, which you have to publish and make publicly available. Right now, that process is fairly convoluted and complicated. There's a couple of different areas where people need to post things, including the website. There's not great integration with the Granicus Agenda Management System right now. So there's opportunities there just to simplify it and also just document what that process is so that we can be holding people accountable to make sure that all of the documentation for each of these meetings is publicly available in a timely manner. So we have some recommendations on that as well. And I think here, there are a lot fewer sort of policy questions that I think are going to come up in this section. I think this is really going to mostly be for management to implement some of these changes. So of all of these areas, this is probably the one that City Council is going to have the least insight into just because a lot of it is really logistics. But we wanted to make sure that this is part of this review as well because obviously, the staff liaisons play a really critical role in this work too. Any questions on this section?
Questions? I don't see any.
Great.
Oh, City Manager has something on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Keith Staley, City Manager. Just in regards to the continuing efforts to review and whether the city's Agenda Management System is meeting the needs of the city, we've had a tremendous amount of struggles this week with our Legisdar system for a whole nother, a whole band of different reasons related to the state and their support of our website. But from my perspective, this is one of the weaknesses of our Agenda Management System is when I go looking for an agenda for this meeting, for example, or for other boards and commissions, it's like hunting for lost treasures. Things are under the bed and things are upstairs and some things are in the sock drawer, but nothing is in one place. So my hope and dream is that at some point in the not-too-distant future, we will have one place where all boards and commissions and City Council's agendas can be found and the associated materials can be easily identified. And the videos related to those proceedings can also be easily identified and streamed. So that is my dream. I am frustrated by our system and my ability to find agendas when I'm trying to track them down as I'm getting ready for a meeting and I'm trying to find the Finance Committee agenda and did it come in an email and where is it on the webpage? So I understand how you might be frustrated as, you know, somebody who literally deals with this every single day. I find this part of our work to not be helpful in us being successful. So Dan and I have had this conversation on numerous occasions and he's well aware of my concerns and we are working on a resolution. And of course, like all things related to our software and software implementations, it is not instantaneous and we need to be patient. But this is a priority for me. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think we're ready to move on.
Fantastic. So our last area here was neighborhood associations. And as I started with, this was one area where ambiguity was the main word that came up when we were having these conversations. Because I do think that neighborhood associations are fairly unique in terms of their relationship to the city, where they are separate entities but are recognized and supported formally by the city as well. And so our recommendations here mostly focused on what can you do to improve within the current structure? So for example, thinking about what are the actual expectations that the city has in terms of the support that is provided? In your charter, you have some fairly specific things saying that the city will do these things if resources are available. But I think some of this is also about setting the expectation, saying this is what the city has resources to provide, and then setting those expectations as well with the neighborhood association groups. I think another piece of this that we have noted here is that I think in the past, potentially, neighborhood associations have been seen as a source for holistic feedback about community sentiment. And I think it's more accurate to say neighborhood associations really represent the group of folks who are showing up and participating at those neighborhood associations. This is really critical, important feedback from these different community groups, but it is not necessarily representative of the community as a whole. So just remembering that neighborhood associations are a really critical stakeholder group for you all and that anytime that you're getting feedback, that this is just one point of feedback rather than the end point in terms of as you're collecting information and getting feedback from the community. Another piece that we were looking at was because the neighborhood associations, in order to receive support from the city and to receive that formal recognition from the city, there are some requirements that you have in place right now in terms of what every neighborhood association needs to do. And so there are some areas where the city could make choices. So we have some considerations for you all to think about in terms of if there's any additional requirements that you would want to see from those formerly recognized neighborhood associations, things like implementing a code of conduct or some of those other items there. We also looked, there is one neighborhood program coordinator who supports all of these groups. There used to be more folks in this role, but we're down to a single coordinator. And they are doing incredibly valiant, excellent, fantastic work in this area, but it is also just one person at this point. So we have some recommendations here around making sure that there's sufficient backup for this role so that they can, you know, take time off as needed and do those things. But also thinking about how can we, you know, really right-size what this singular role is expected to do in terms of all of the services that are being provided? Because some of them have just been kind of collapsed down into this single role and it is quite a large workload that is expected at this point in time. And then finally, we did look, because we know that different, depending on which ward you are in, you might go to one neighborhood association meeting, you might go to eight neighborhood association meetings. So there's a wide variety there in terms of the support. We did look at sort of what it would take if we wanted to restructure neighborhood associations around the ward structure, which they are not currently structured in that way. But we did not think that that is a feasible path at this point in time. These are neighborhood groups that are generated by the neighborhoods. And so it seems appropriate to have them in the structure that they are. But we also recognize that that means that they don't perfectly line up with the ward structure that you all have here as well. So we have some recommendations there where a neighborhood association spans, excuse me, spans two wards. For example, selecting a primary liaison might be one way of doing it or just providing additional support for those of you who have many, many neighborhood association meetings to attend. And I think another piece of that is also recognizing that it's a choice for every council member whether or not they wish to attend these meetings. It's not necessarily a requirement. And that goes back to a little bit of the expectation setting, I think, with some of the neighborhood associations because I think historically, that has felt like that, that there is an expectation that folks are at every meeting as well. So I think that that kind of brings us full circle on neighborhood associations. So we, again, we have some recommendations here to potentially clarify and make that relationship clear, but also make sure that everybody's on the same page around, this is the resources that we have to support these important groups. What can we do with the resources that we have without burnout or making sure that this actually is sustainable moving forward as well? So any thoughts or questions on neighborhood associations?
Counselor Stapleton.
Yeah, this is a question for staff. I know that we used to have a lot of the neighborhood program coordinators. How many did we have at our height? Do we have that number?
I don't know what was at the height, but I have spoken to a woman at the recent open house down at Center 50+. And she was a neighborhood coordinator and she spoke about two other people at that meeting. So I'm assuming that there were three people then. And she preceded Irma. Irma, of course, is an extraordinary person and does extraordinary work. But this is another instance where the city has taken cuts over time. And like our police chief likes to say, you know, the death by a thousand cuts, this was two of them that occurred, you know, many years ago. But it marks a reduction in service. We used to have a much more robust program with many different offerings where, yes, there was a neighborhood liaison at every single meeting. That's simply not possible for Irma to be at all 17 neighborhood associations every single month of the year. So if that is our expectation, then we're going to need to staff it differently. So I really appreciate this aspect of the conversation. And also, you know, I see the tremendous load that that puts on councilors as well. Some councilors have, Counselor Nishioke, you have eight? Eight. I was off by 100%. Yeah, eight.
I have eight. I try to get-
Counselor, could you turn your microphone on if you're going to speak?
I have eight neighborhood associations and a couple of them overlap on same days. So I typically make it to seven.
That's extraordinary.
Counselor Nordeig.
Sorry about that. I had an issue with the mute button. Okay, thank you so much. This is a really important aspect of this work session tonight. Our neighborhood associations have a lot of opportunity to weigh in on some of the biggest issues facing our city. They weigh in on development. They weigh in on budget issues. They weigh in on crime and so on. They have the power to create neighborhood watch programs that would not only help reduce and prevent crime in the area, but help vulnerable residents respond during emergencies, whether it's a blackout or an ice storm or a heat dome. In my ward, I know I have a lot of vulnerable seniors who live alone and they need power 24/7, whether to support an oxygen tank, for one example. And so I see neighborhood associations as really critical. And yet, just speaking for my ward, they are extremely underutilized. Most of my neighborhood associations have a very small turnout. They supposedly represent thousands. And when they speak up for those thousands, we're really only getting the personal opinions of a handful of people. And so I do feel that they are underutilized. One of the things that I think I mentioned to the Moss Adams folk is, part of the problem is the timing for a lot of these neighborhood meetings. Most of my meetings are held at 6:30, 6:45, or 7 o'clock on a weeknight. That is a terrible time for people working a nine-to-five job. It's because you're literally waiting two hours after your workday has allegedly ended. I say allegedly because many of us who have a job that supposedly ends at five doesn't really end at five. So by the time you, the counselor, the unpaid volunteer, shows up at one of these meetings, this is the 12th hour of your 12-hour day or this is the 10th hour of your 10-hour day. And you're exhausted and now it's time to give your neighborhood your full attention. And that is a challenge. And I don't think it's only a challenge for me. I also believe for anyone who wants to go to these meetings, how many people want to end their workday and then go to a neighborhood meeting that might take two to three hours on a Tuesday night? Especially if you have caregiving obligations. If you're the one expected to put food on the table, if you're the one expected to make sure that the kid's homework is done or that the dog gets to go outside or get a walk or any other caregiving obligations for that matter, how are you expected to do that and go to a meeting at that timeframe? But so long as that meeting timeframe works for the handful of people who run the neighborhood association meetings, it's not going to change. And I think that's a difficult conversation that I need to have with my neighborhood associations and ask them, does it make sense to be meeting so late at night? It makes it very difficult for people, especially with children, to participate. And I was at a neighborhood association meeting recently and one of the neighborhood co-chairs had her daughter there. And I could tell that the co-chair really wanted to engage and give the neighborhood her full attention, talk about the Community Violence Reduction Initiative and this and that. And her input is always greatly valued, but she was very distracted because her daughter was running around. Because that's what kids do. So I would urge neighborhood associations to really think about some more equity-related decisions. Meeting at that time of night is a tough time for people to get to if you're working full-time or if you have caregiving obligations. So I would consider, at a minimum, looking at meeting closer to five. And I think they would be surprised at how many more people would show up, not to mention, different people would show up. The other challenge we see is we have great institutional knowledge at a lot of our neighborhood associations, a lot of folks who have enormous amount of knowledge about the process, about city government, about neighborhood concerns. And that's incredible. That is a treasured resource. And these folks give their time for free. So I value all of our neighborhood leaders, but I just want them to consider. And the city can help with this concept. How can we revisit when and where these places meet, these associations meet, so that they will get more participation? Thanks.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to share that, how it went from the very first time I attended a neighborhood association meeting, I think it might have been now like maybe 15 years ago. I attended it. I didn't understand the language. I didn't understand the Robert's Rules of Orders at that time. I didn't understand what they were talking about, land use. I just wanted to go get involved and help my neighborhood. And after I left that meeting, I told myself, that's the last neighborhood association I ever go to. I didn't feel welcome, you know? And so, and, you know, I have this challenge with my neighborhood associations. I share with them that what I want them to do is be a strong association between themselves, that they don't need the counselor. They need to be, you know, themselves. No matter who the counselor is, they need to build relations with other councilors, not just the one upstream. And also remind them that, you know, I spend a lot of time, because I'm a working dad, so that time, I appreciate Counselor Nordeig's comments because it's exactly why it's really hard for me as a working dad to attend these meetings.
Counselor, I think you may have frozen. We'll come back to him.
Conversations are clear about what their goals are as attendees, people. It'll be helpful for all. Thank you.
Counselor, unfortunately, you froze during, towards the end of that. I don't know if you wanted to repeat some of that- I don't know if you wanted to repeat some of that. I'm not sure what we missed.
I think the last part was just ensuring that the attendees of the neighborhood associations are clear on what the city expects of their work. Because I think that's where there's a lot of misunderstanding. You know, some of them are, they really want to give, but then they run into what the reality is of what these neighborhood associations mean to us as a city, as our city government and how we're organized. Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Phillips.
Thank you. First, I mean, I think that the neighborhood associations really are an essential aspect of our community and I support them and want to continue to see them, you know, grow and be even more utilized. I mean, I've heard, you know, a lot of this, we're looking at how this applies to like what's in the charter and I've heard that the charter says that they have a specific role, but it also is conditional upon the resources the city has. And we're very constrained right now. You know, we're down from, you know, maybe 10, 20 years ago, there were three city employees that were neighborhood coordinators, but now we just have one. I don't see us going below that, but like anything could happen in the next few years with our budget crisis. Is there, is there anything like right now that we can't do? I mean, is the, does the charter need to change because we're so resource constrained? Or is it okay for now?
Just to clarify, the charter is silent as to neighborhood associations? Are we referring specifically to neighborhood associations or just in general?
Yeah, I, I mean, I did not look at the section specific to this, but I just heard it says, it kind of depends on our resources, but maybe that's based on other policies that aren't specific to the charter.
The, the code is actually, has some language in regarding neighborhood associations. From the land use perspective, neighborhood associations satisfy our goal one citizen involvement requirement. Obviously, neighborhood associations have been around before, you know, the 19th century land use laws and whatnot, and they serve a much broader function than just getting a box checked for land use stuff. But we have pretty broad authority to do what we want and to expand the role or clarify the role and how council sees fit.
Okay, I mean, maybe I'm looking for like what comes next from the recommendations in terms of specifics, but on this list, I think it's, you know, like kind of establishing, or maybe it's on a prior page, kind of a minimal code of conduct, setting kind of expectations. Is that, you know, it's mentioned here, but like what might that look like? And then does the city have resources to like, you know, facilitate that or insist that?
I can maybe start then, Annie, you can help clarify what I'm trying to say. You know, we had the neighborhood association recognition process. So annually, the neighborhood associations have to come to council and get recognized. The requirements in the code for that are very sparse and there's been incidents and issues in the past where neighborhood associations have had issues with holding meetings, holding meetings that are accessible, things like that, ensuring that all the neighborhood members have a chance to provide input in their meetings and on issues. Those are things that we can beef up in the code as far as saying, oh, to be recognized, you need to do these things and it's a continuing obligation throughout the year, as far as the code of conduct piece goes. But Annie, maybe you can expand on that.
Yes, thank you so much. And I apologize, I might've misspoke and said charter when I meant code, so that might be where I threw you off on that one. Yes, within the code, that is the opportunity to expand those and I think the city absolutely can do that. I think the point that you bring up though, in terms of like how enforceable is this? I think ultimately that there is a challenge, is going to be a challenge there in terms of the staff resources that you have, but I do think that there could be still pretty significant value to saying, okay, we're asking you all to have a baseline code of conduct. This is what is expected because then if issues do arise, you have something to come back to and something to ground into versus not having that infrastructure, which you currently don't have in place. So if there is a really significant issue that happens within one of these groups, the city is put in an awkward position there because ultimately you don't have direct authority over a lot of these things, but members of the community are going to be looking to the city to say, hey, these are, you know, city-recognized neighborhood associations and this thing happened, whatever that looks like, that's outside of the code of conduct or what would be expected. So this would just give you another tool there. So I think that it would still be beneficial, even if you couldn't go through and have the resources for every single group to, you know, check off and make sure everything is in place too.
Yeah, that summary is exactly what I was trying to get to. And then just for the record, I don't think I've had any issues in the three neighborhood associations that I typically have gone to over the last, you know, four years. You know, Morningside's well organized, they do a good job. I guess, just, you know, it's a little bit off topic, but you know, there's, it's difficult now with the changes that we've had over time, like I don't think we use schools anymore to, to meet up.
Some do.
Some do. I mean, it's just like that is, that has affected like, you know, the ability of the neighborhood associations to meet in person. So, you know, it's, and then moving into like more modern times and having hybrid meetings just takes a lot for volunteers to coordinate, but it's really helpful to get more people to attend when you have the option to be there in person and/or online. So, you know, when and where possible to kind of help make those, you know, facilitate having those things available, I would encourage.
Counselor Nishioke.
Thank you, Mayor Hoy. One of the things I find interesting with neighborhood associations, and I'm not sure if this was reviewed, they all have their own bylaws and they're all different. And I think that for me as a counselor, that's a little difficult because it's like, well, one has something special written in their bylaws, but I might not know that. I haven't read all of their bylaws. And so it would be nice if we could see some uniformity so that we understood what their bylaws were, but I feel that when I've mentioned that, I was met with, you know, like shock and like, don't you dare try to change the bylaws that we worked on. So anyway, I just find that that's still another little piece that kind of gets thrown into the mix.
I think that you're speaking to the core essential tension that comes up here, where these groups are their own individual entities, thus a variety of bylaws, and yet they are all fulfilling a really critical need of the city and so you're working in partnership with them. But even as we're thinking about how could these groups be more supported, have more people show up, be more representative, be more connected and accessible and welcoming, all of these are really fantastic questions and a lot of your neighborhood associations are thinking about these questions, but ultimately the city is in a position where you have influence, but not necessarily direct control unless you put it into the code in some way, shape or form.
Any other questions or comments on this one? I think we're ready to move on.
Okay. So that was the last piece that I wanted to share tonight. We can come back to any of the topics that we just went through if we have additional questions, discussion items, if there's any topics that we have not yet touched upon that you expect to see as part of this, very happy to go back to those as well. In terms of the general next steps, we anticipate having the draft in the next several weeks for you by the end of the month so that you can see all of those pieces. And we anticipate there might be additional questions when you see that full, full report as well. In addition to that, I know that staff are interested in putting together an implementation plan that could basically look at if we were actually going to move forward on some of these pieces, what would that, what could that look like? What could that look like with our current resources? When might some of these things be sequenced? That type of information. So I know there's interest in working on a proposal as well that could be brought forward to this group for consideration, as well as obviously there's a lot of policy questions that are going to be raised. Some of this stuff is very logistical, very administrative, and some of it really speaks to much broader questions like how do we want to be using council liaisons? How do we want to have some of these pieces structured? So I anticipate that there will be future discussion probably on some of those topic points as well. But with that, any additional questions or additional topics that we didn't touch on potentially that you might be hoping to see or discuss?
To clarify, you said that the report will be to us by the end of the month. Did you mean the end of June? Because you said several weeks.
Yes, in the next two weeks is what we are aiming for.
Oh, next two weeks, so end of May? Great, okay. Counselor Norick.
Thank you. Couple of thoughts. I think that right now is sort of the worst time to be talking about compensation for a city council and mayor. Given our budgetary woes, that just strikes me as tone deaf at best. I have talked about in the past, perhaps in lieu of just cutting a check to counselors, what about a childcare stipend or some other way to ensure that there's some equity in getting people to run for office? I understand the reasoning behind wanting to compensate people for their time, but I also feel that there are some folks who run for council who don't need that financial incentive and just providing that financial incentive is no guarantee that the people who run for council will suddenly be more diverse or let alone that they'll win. So I have some concerns about examining compensation for council and the mayor. I will look forward to the report and I will read it carefully, but I can't in good conscience say that's a great idea right now. I think that we should be talking about much more important ways to address our budgetary issues and paying ourselves is not one of them. Another thing I will be curious to see in the report, because I didn't hear a lot of discussion tonight, why, why would we recommend increasing the mayoral term? What is the value to changing it from two years to four years? We know that there is a precedent for having a two-year term for some types of elected office, such as the House of Representatives, and there's a precedent for four-year terms, again, the Senate. So I'm just curious to know, and I will be looking forward to the report to understand, why would we recommend making a significant change to the mayoral term? Last but not least, one thing that I don't think I saw really elevated in this conversation tonight, but again, maybe it'll be in the report, in lieu of compensating the city counselors, another thing that I am a huge proponent is, is in more constituent engagement. So last September, October, I can't remember what month that was, November it actually, I think it was, we held a South Salem Town Hall and I asked for a modest budget of up to $5,000 to reach all of South Salem and that was voted down. And after that town hall, which we had a really good turnout, notwithstanding the lack of funding, I had folks say, I didn't know about it. I didn't hear about it. I would have wanted to come. We had no budget to advertise it. We passed the word on through neighborhood association meetings, we put up a few flyers and we still got a lot of people there, but, you know, no more than 100, I would argue. And South Salem has tens of thousands of residents. So I don't see why we haven't considered more of a budget for counselors to engage with their constituents. Not money that comes to me or to any other member of council, but funds that could be used to help get the word out so that people know when town halls are happening, so that people know when the neighborhood association meetings and other important meetings are happening. There are some resources dedicated to it, but I can assure you that the vast majority of my residents have no idea who their counselor is, who their mayor is, or which neighborhood association they belong to, if they even know that's a thing. So I will look forward to reading this report, but those are the concerns that I wanted to raise. Thanks.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Thanks, Mayor. You know, somebody, some of the, or suggestions or recommendations about, you know, two-year term, paying the counselors, I think, I'm more concerned with what it's going to cost to get that on the ballot, you know, so I just, I don't remember, that's, I know that costs money. That's where some of my concern is. And, and actually, you know, on the Revenue Task Force, we had suggested and we approved that some stipend for people that voluntarily sign up. Do we have an idea of how many people took advantage of that? Do we have that information? Because I think that'll be helpful.
I don't have that information right now, but we could certainly find that unless anyone else in the room does know that off the top.
Yeah, I asked that same question just the other day and I think it's five people, five out of the 27 that were appointed.
Okay, good. I'd say that was, that was definitely set up so we could start looking into what it might mean if we do offer some kind of, so that's good to know, good to know that some people did take advantage. Thank you.
Further discussion? Counselor Nishioke.
Thank you. So I wasn't quite sure where I might bring this up and so I'm going to go ahead and do it now. I know that we have already several boards and commissions that citizen members are part of, but having looked at a couple other cities, I feel like we might want to consider having an economic development advisory board. I think they're kind of tied up with some areas, you know, with the urban renewal, travel Salem, you know, I'm not quite sure where they might fit in, but I just, it might be an idea to consider and I'm not sure you're going to bring forward those that you're thinking might not need to be still with us. I'm just wondering if we might add this as a possibility of one to consider. Thank you.
Counselor Stapleton.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm really interested in the, in the system that they set up in Bend and I'm sure they've set it up in other areas, but where they have a separate, and maybe somebody who knows more about this can speak more intelligently about it, but they have a separate group that's set up, very separate from the council to review the mayor and council, I guess stipends or pay. And I just would be really curious to know how that's set up, if that's something that would work here. I, I am one of the people who thinks that these positions should be paid, at least a stipend. I know as council president, I probably give close to 30 hours a week to my work here on council and I think that's a lot to ask from somebody for free. And so I would like to move us into, into the, the future of what this looks like and what the rest of, of the state is doing, a lot of the cities. Whenever I'm at a League of Oregon Cities conference, they usually walk by me and pat me on the back and, you know, thank me for my service or hand me their free candy because they know that, that we don't get paid and everybody else in the state seems to. So at any rate, I would be really curious to know if that would be a good setup for the city of Salem. I think it has worked well for them to be, because it is weird for a city counselor or a mayor to be advocating for their own pay or the position that they hold to be paid. I agree 100% with that, but I think that there can be ways where the community has a part in this and it's separate from us, but that the work that does happen on council does get recognized.
Thank you, Counselor. Yeah, just for a little historical perspective, I may have, I may be the only one on council who was on council when we last addressed this and I voted, I very much think that council and the mayor should have some, some level of compensation, but I actually voted against it because the proposal was that we, we authorized it ourselves in the form of a stipend and I felt like that was very, I felt like that violated the charter and we should not be doing that for ourselves. So I was actually the fifth vote, I believe, at the time to kill it, because I tend to agree with what, with what you had to say about that. I don't think it should come from us. It should be more community-based or some other entity, not, not coming from within. Did you have something, Mr. Staley?
Sure. To Counselor Stapleton's comment, we certainly can look at what the city of Bend and others are doing by way of, I'm familiar with communities using a compensation committee and making a recommendation to city council and then that doesn't go into effect until the next election cycle. So anybody voting on that doesn't benefit from making that decision until after an election cycle, so, which is typical.
Counselor Phillips.
Yeah, I was debating whether or not to even talk about this tonight, but I mean, I'm already on the record, I've been quoted in the newspaper saying I support compensation for members of this body, but I agree with my colleagues that it shouldn't be up to us and I really want to hear more information about, you know, having a more community-led group. I, like, I don't know how to put this into words, but like I think that what we do here has value and, you know, to expect the level of expertise and time it takes to do, you know, the position of mayor, city council, city council president, the subcommittees we sit on, it's just, it's a lot. It's more than a lot and there are real stresses that come with this and, and for me, I'll never benefit from it. You know, my term's up at the end of this year and I don't ever plan to seek election type stuff again, but I still think that this is wrong. You know, like this, this work has value and what's not being discussed is
You know, like this work has value, and what's not being discussed is that we have one of the newest city councils in our history. Nobody has been on this body for 10 years. You know, the norm now is people typically do one term, so that has an impact, and I just, I think for equity's sake, in terms of who can do this, you know, typically it's more affluent retired people that have time that can gravitate towards these positions, and I think that it limits who could be here, and so for equity's sake alone, I would be in favor of some type of stipend at a minimum. I mean, I'd look at childcare stuff, anything to increase the, you know, the ability of every single person having a chance to serve in these types of positions. So I don't want to talk about it because I think it's politically toxic, and there's no feasibility of it happening in the short term, in terms of months, I doubt even a couple of years. We're in the middle of a budget crisis, so, you know, it's tough, but like it doesn't mean that the status quo isn't wrong, and I think it's wrong, the status quo.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Verney. You're on mute.
Thank you. My internet is really unstable, so I've been really quiet this evening. I'm looking forward to seeing the report. In regards to compensation, I agree with Counselor Stapleton and Counselor Phillips. I think it's, our work is valuable, and we donate a lot of time and service to the community. And I, for myself, it's not only volunteering my time, but I use my own paid leave time at work often, because I can't flex my schedule that much, and it's important for me to be at the committees and the assignments, and so I'm paying to be here, and so that's an issue. So I really think the idea of a compensation committee is a really good idea, so, because I really enjoy, I find being on council rewarding, we're making a big difference, we're doing a lot of things, but, you know, it's challenging when you're holding down a full-time job. Did you hear me okay? I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, we did, Counselor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can I say another something else?
Sure.
Okay, I wanted to mention on the neighborhood associations in terms of bylaws, I think it would be helpful if we had at least a few items in our code that we required that they had in their bylaws, like the code of conduct and something on ethics and something on equity, perhaps. I mean, they don't all have to have carbon copy bylaws, but we should be able to say that there are certain things that do need to be included. I wanted to mention that. And in terms of requirements for what neighborhood associations have to do and provide, we need to make sure we can provide the staff to support that. For example, if you have a neighborhood association that only has a few members and they're required to submit minutes after every meeting, and you have one or two officers, it's really challenging to do the minutes on top of running the meeting and all the other things. And so it is crucial that we provide that support. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Annie Rose, what else do you have?
That's all we have this evening, and so our next step's here is going to be getting that full report over to you all in the next little bit, and then I anticipate that that will be followed up by a potential staff implementation proposal as well.
All right. Anything else, Ms. Rogers?
No, thank you for your time tonight.
All right, thank you, everybody. We're adjourned.